To order it is now one oh six P M on May thirtieth and this is a meeting of the state Charter School Board, Utah State Charter School Board. We welcome those who are online. It's a little unusual for us today. We have an anchor spot and those others who are joining us online here at the anchor. Chair Phillips and I are here Chair Bowles with both Directors Kramer and Stephenson. We also welcome Deputy Superintendent Jones at the table with us today and welcome him to our meeting. Let me just verify those that we're cut. So we have established a quorum and we know others are with us. I believe we know that and just say here or anything else you'd like to add to that, that member Spiker is here with us today.
I am here.
Right. Thank you. And members Sisneros?
Here.
Here. Wonderful. So let me check some of our other members. Member Smith? Not yet. Member Bassett, we knew may have to be excused today as she's traveling, but I'll ask Member Bassett, are, have you been able to join us? Thank you. All right. We know that we know that she is traveling and Member Olson? Okay, there are four of us who at this point, so we have quorum, we'll just, we're going to continue. I don't know if there are others, Member Carrie who often joins us or any of our new folks we haven't yet met. Well, board hasn't yet met in person from A A G's office. I don't know if either of them have been able to join us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
This is Kurt. Very welcome. We're so happy to get to know you and we look forward to next month, perhaps seeing you in person. We can more officially.
Yeah. Yes, I stopped by the last in-person meeting. But didn't meet all of you and my colleague Nicole Ferguson will be at the June meeting, but yes, we'll be alternating meetings until we get.
Welcome. We hope you. It'll at least be interesting for you, I think.
Yeah, no, it's great. Happy to help.
Yeah, welcome. Yes, we've already heard good reports from, from Director Kramer and Stephenson and so we're looking forward to the rest of this. So thank you for being here with us. Let's begin then Vice Chair Phillips will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. We will launch into our business.
Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Fabulous. I don't know if we have anyone in line. We don't have anyone present, anyone who has indicated, we don't know. Has indicated they want to make a public comment. We do. All right. Thank you.
Did you see her? Oh, sorry.
No, no, no. All right. So we're set. All right. So we don't know of any public comments today, but we'll. If someone comes online and chimes in, you've missed that. Let us know. I mean, to continue past the thought and our consent calendar. For board members, any of you have would like to pull anything from that consent question, concern about that consent calendar? Not hearing any, I'll go right to avoid a vote on the consent calendar. Let me do that.
I'd like to motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you so much. So a motion to accept the consent. Do I have a second to that? I'll second just for string of, of uh, smoothness of that process as we're here and there, but um, let me do a roll call vote relative to that. So go to those who are online. All in favor of that to support member Spiker, your vote?
Uh, yes.
Member Sisneros?
Yes.
Do we have any other board members who've? I'll go to Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes as well. That motion passes, we pass the consent calendar. We're to our first action item, the startup and innovation grant. Uh, and Director Kramer is going to begin with, oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, sorry. I did skip the executive director report. So, so sorry. And I know he has one. Please. Director Kramer.
Well, I just want to start off by thanking board members for your commitment to schedule another meeting and then get some of the different agenda items done. Uh, I think it was characterized as we just have a lot of work to do. And so here we are in an extra board meeting and really appreciate that. So I'm going to start off in the executive director's report, just letting you know that it's going to be a little bit different than other ones. It won't be as thorough. Uh, and one of the things to start off with, you can see here is that at the last board meeting that we held CPA and also SPA board took action, we took action as a board regarding CPA and SPA. Uh, and the action was that the state charter school board approved the proposal to transfer operation and control the charter school known as Salt Lake Performing Arts Academy to the governing board of Canyon Grove Academy as also approved by the Salt Lake District contingent upon stipulations as verified by the state charter school staff. And so I, I give us that reminder on the action just to call to attention that we don't need to visit this. This is why you don't see it on the agenda item. Again, assuming that the stipulations were created, which I want to give you some verification of that happening and that a lot of the stipulations have been met. And so the stipulations for the surrender of Salt Lake Performing Arts Academy was a collaborative process. Uh, you know, it was done with, with the assistance. Thank you. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Jones is here. He'll help support on that. Uh, certainly the Salt Lake District as the current authorizer of SPA was involved. Got some different ideas from other stakeholders and other people and compiled a, a short list of stipulations. And I won't go into deal with all of them, but I just want to give you a flavor for what those stipulations are. Uh, the first was executing a new lease and that's been done. And so the new lease is done, request and received two attorney opinions. Uh, one was an opinion regarding the Canyon Grove Academy's organizational structure and board composition, that it's lawful, um, adheres to relevant regulations and some other things. And we received that attorney opinion. And so that's the second stipulation has met. Another stipulation was a second letter, an attorney opinion from Canyon Grove Academy's attorney. Just verifying that that lease that we just talked about, uh, that in their opinion, their legal opinion, that it was lawful and it complied with applicable regulations and we received that. Uh, so that's another done on the stipulation list. We have received a draft of what's called a statement of assurance. Uh, there's three main parts, just that the academic uh, core curriculum will be robust. We've had, the board had a lot of discussion of academics. And so there's an assurance statement that's draft format, expect to be done any day. Uh, you know, I feel very confident that we're going to receive that and also an assurance on the financial obligations. Uh, and that's the new lease would integrate into the business plan and that SPA was not a really high enrollment number, but it was something reasonable and a hundred and ten has been kind of the reasonable approximation of students. Um, these stipulations also had some dates associated with it as to when they could be done. Uh, so that was good. Uh, because the data helped us track and get a lot of it in. Uh, they also, uh, there is an, an assignment of chart between the two authorizers and Salt Lake District Attorney uh, has created and signed uh, that and it's would wait then for Chair Bowles, your signature. And then uh, has a space for mine actually on that one. And so we leave that assignment of charter stipulation to be very near done, just waiting on signature. And then um, executing the chart agreement. Uh, and so with that particular item, it's more of a a one that takes a little bit of time. There are discussions that that will be just a charter agreement with a schedule aid that describes, this is just discussion, not final, because there's a little bit of time to final. Get final, but this would have to do is schedule A that refers to Canyon Grove Academy and a schedule B, which we know is a part of our is the exhibits or the schedules that are for the SPA's uh, details. And so that's just, uh, that one's not done. But that one's in uh, discussion and then it's in uh, close, uh, it's getting closer. It's conceptually being worked. And so I think with those things, I, the executive director's report is really then a report on this. It's fortune ahead, right? You could tell in the very fact that the stipulations were created, that they're being met. That this is uh, all systems go and the board would not be called upon for another action item of any. Uh, we seem like a really feel-good story and that the students will have the opportunity. Uh, and I think that was a timely uh, article that came out uh, when enough was in place to be sure. So it was good reporting. We uh, had some good quotes from Kim Goats, who's the Canyon Grove. There's some other good things in there. And so we just wanted to highlight that that there and and if you want to take a look at, yeah, Marie's even pulling it up there. And then I think next uh, step uh, could be like a agreement signing day. We've been talking about our agreement. But to bring some real uh, energy, positive energy to that particular day. You know, it is a big bilateral contractual agreement, but yet it's exciting because there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And so that's a possibility. That's why the question mark is there. Is just maybe it was a charter agreement signing day. So that's part of the executive director's report. The next slide uh, talks just about other updates. Member Spiker uh, polls the NAXA conference. Fingers are crossed and we're waiting to hear back. Uh, both authorization finance fees have been meeting and doing work in the last few weeks. We've had a couple of opportunities where executive uh, committee has instructed us carving up time in their busy schedules. I can also share with you that the academic uh, being led by member of our team Brendan is taking the lead on that framework. Financial and Lisa is taking the, the lead on that for us. And now it's ready is taking the lead on the operations framework. All of these frameworks are in progress. None of them need to be done in July or August. Uh, in fact, head of committee and board review hoping to begin in August, July being a little bit more time to think and breathe and and do those things, but we could pick it right back up in August for a school fiscal year twenty-five. Item is to review the work. Uh, that they're getting a lot of stakeholder feedback. They're using consultant services and it's just really fun to see the progress of those uh, different groups, working groups. And then of course, we would post it publicly and seek public comment. We've adopted wholeheartedly the thirty days plus uh, for those things. So and then I think the last update for the executive director's report is congratulations class of twenty twenty-four. Marie is the Associate Executive Director, did a fantastic job with the logistics of organizing how board members and staff would get to a lot of different graduation services. And so ceremonies. And so Marie, maybe you could just speak and summarize that uh, a little bit for us in this report.
Thank you, Director Kramer. Um, I'm happy to share that we were able to go to all but three graduation ceremonies for our entire portfolio. And so uh, that was a large undertaking. Just short of forty graduations. And uh, as you know, graduations don't happen throughout the entire month. They all seem to fall in about two weeks span. Uh, and most of them within the same one or two days. Uh, and so that was a lot of coordinated and going uh, to uh, various parts of our entire state. Um, we had uh, board members, you know, all the way down to St. George. We had people out uh, out to the east and out to the west. And, and anyway, it was exciting to have um, representation and for those three that we didn't make it to, uh, Dr. Kramer and I have said, you know, like to come visit and sorry that we missed your graduates. Uh, please give them all of our best for a happy and productive life ahead. Um, and we'll prioritize those for next year. Uh, but we were just so proud of our graduates. Uh, we were also able to debrief with our staff today at a standing and uh, to hear just how inspiring all of the ceremonies where everyone talked about, you know, taking messages home and sharing their families and um, also just how fun it is to see the variety of graduation ceremonies and how uh, it really reflects that the mission and the models and the different flavors essentially of our schools. And you can see that mission and model come through even in the way they choose to honor their graduates. Um, and it was just a really great uh, opportunity. I'm sure you as well, getting to go to those ceremonies. And so we were so proud of our, our students and our, our great portfolio that we have.
Lot of fun. And because this is a congratulations slide, just I know one of the ceremonies that I went, Superintendent Sydney was uh, was honored uh, and given um, a recognition for her support of one of our charter schools during a very trying time. Uh, that would be the COVID times and that was awesome to see her there. Other board members, uh, Board of Education members were at that one and and then another congratulations, just we had a lunch and a celebration for Marie today, five years with the Utah State Board of Education and State Charter School Board. And it was uh, great to celebrate you uh, for your tenure. So thought of those things with the congratulations slide. That is the conclusion of the executive director's report, little different format. Um, if there's any questions or anything else, uh, happy to entertain.
Thank you so much, Director Kramer. I appreciate that. Thank you. Congratulations, Marie. Way to go. Well, congratulations. Thank you to our board members who were able to attend graduations. Thank you because that's extra time and it goes to show the support of folks who, from this board who really appreciate the work that's being done in our schools and we appreciate that you made time to, to visit schools. Thank you. And thank you, Members Spiker for submitting a proposal to NAXA today too. There's still calling for proposals. So I suspect they are trying to get some to the proposal you've submitted and they're going to let you know soon. And thank you for that.
That's the hope. Fingers crossed.
Absolutely. It's going to be there. We're going to be cheering for, for your presentation. Good thing. I, it's good nationally for folks to see the things that are happening. A great addition. So thank you for doing that. We appreciate also for the updates. Director Kramer, relative to Canyon Grove and Salt Lake Performing Arts Academy. So thank you for those updates, just to keep us up to date. Now we're ready to go to our action items. The first three particularly why we're having this meeting because timely we meet statutory requirements to give uh, notice for um, uh, actions. So we give the opportunity for feedback over time and we didn't want to postpone that. We need some of these to happen sooner than later. And so we want to make sure that we meet those requirements. And so we are looking particularly at these first three items for that purpose. So so now I'll turn to Director Kramer for our first action item, the startup and innovation.
Absolutely right. This is why we pulled this additional meeting is to try to get, to try through uh, the next three. I, in different fashions, I, I call this one hopefully the slam dunk, but you know, uh, but we'll see, right? And so I call it just that because this is an agenda item that has been in numerous board meetings. Um, probably it's shown up as an agenda item five different times with varying levels of discussion, deliberation. Moved into numerous committee meetings uh, where they uh, work through improved and we reported out uh, those improvements. And also it was a topic of the twenty twenty-four legislative session uh, because the implementation grant uh, is a, it's a fund, uh, it's it's a fund that's restricted just for that use. And we've been having a balance, a large balance for several years, which is why the legis, this last session they were uh, taking back because maybe it wasn't being used and those things. But nothing did actually go back. You'll see that reported. Um, but there was a great majority of the funds that we uh, held on to and we for and so part of that. We posted public notice and sought public comment, the responsibility if anything comes in uh, and nothing. And so we can move forward knowing that thirty days, uh, at least thirty days uh, for those things have transpired. Uh, and so this is really a, a process which includes a, we define process as a, a policy and then procedures and then a form. Uh, and then also there is a, a helpful guidance document for this too. And so those four documents along with the rationale and everything else that's been around in all these different places, a few different times. Thank you. Yes, thank you. And so discussion, we certainly up to you Chair Bowles. But we do have a suggested board action. You can see it there and it would be to approve the startup and implementation grants process. Which are those three things and the guidance document to continue awarding startup and implementation grants, including awarding the innovation grant side of it. And that was for the new board rule, we pretty exhaustively have gone through.
Thank you. Thank you. We have those materials in our board set of materials this week to review and to take care of. So I'm just going to ask if there is any discussion relative to the startup and innovation grant, any online or here? And Vice Chair Phillips, welcome to Vice Chair Phillips first.
I had a chance to review these documents and I, I'm really appreciative of the combination of a base, particularly for the innovation and the sort of the small pilot programs that are being funded by the sandbox uh, innovative program. I like the fact that there's a base funding and then it is increased according to the number of uh, students involved. And it seems like a very fair way to distribute these funds. I like the fact that we're distributing what the legislature allocated for purposes uh, for which it has been allocated instead of sort of sitting on it a little bit too long, I think, in some instances. So I, I like the money that we're given, go to, go to things that the legislature intended. So Chair, if I could, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the board approve the startup and implementation grants process, including the policy, precise forms and the guidance document. Uh, in order to continue to award startup and implementation grants, including the awarding of innovation grants.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Vice Chair Phillips. How about someone online? If you feel so inclined, do I have a second?
This is Steph, sorry, Member Spiker, and I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. And a second from Member Spiker. We'll go to any discussion. I just want to say first too, that that we ha- have had some change of philosophy, I think, of our group where we were holding on to money. Saying, well, just in case something happens, we were reticent to spend any money. We shouldn't just, well, we know we spend, we're very careful about it and we have specific purposes for that. And sometimes we plan, hope a little bit because we say it, we're going to need this money for this specific purpose in the future, but just to hold for uh, some potential someday, uh, it's much better to say the potentials are sitting there. They actually are. There are needs and to release that to schools, do good work. Uh, I'm really happy to see. So that's my perspective. Any other discussion or comment? All right. Not hearing any, we'll go to a vote on the motion. The motion was to approve as uh, Vice Chair Phillips outlined for us. And all those in favor of the motion, I'm going to do roll call again, just because some are here and some are not. So Chair Phillips? Number Spiker?
Sorry, I was having a hard time hitting mute um, uh, unmute. Um, my answer is yes.
Yes, so vote. For Member Sisneros?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, any other board members online at this point? All right. I'll rule that vote carries. I voted as well. So unanimous vote of those present at this meeting. Let's then move.
Just next steps, real, thank you. That's a great achievement of the board, I think, and really exciting. Next steps would be, you know, our growth and innovation specialist, uh, Amy Pace will help to uh, get the word out about the innovation side of it. Uh, she's got a lot in that guidance documentation. Uh, in talking with the finance committee, uh, said, hey, heads up, there could be, not still be, but there could be uh, as much as a trillion dollars that goes out to schools in the next few months. And so I just want to make sure that they heard that and that they supported that and, uh, and they were uh, be support for that as well. So those are some next steps. Engaging our specialist in this work. Uh, she's already been working on it uh, a lot. And then trying to get some of the grants uh, out there. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Kramer. We appreciate that too. I also want to just note that Deputy Superintendent Stallings joined us even a little bit ago. I didn't recognize her yet. So we're glad that she's here. We obviously appreciate her being with us as well. All right. Let's move to the second discussion item, merger language.
Thank you. I think I'll take this one and um, we just chime in uh, where, where necessary. Okay, um, I have basketball analogies, probably I could do all day, but this one's more of like a jump shot or like a field goal in basketball, maybe a fifty-five percent, sixty percent uh, probability. I'm just for fun, I just, you know, the slam dunk, appreciate it. But this one is a potentially needs more time, maybe not, of the board. Um, a review of the history of this one. An agenda item in numerous board meetings. Yeah, you've seen the merger language uh, around. We discussed it. Um, I didn't count how many meetings, but I feel very confident at least three and probably five. Uh, it was a topic in numerous board committee meetings. Now this next point is being highlighted just because we did see a change to the voluntary school improvement process or VSEP. And that the VSEP now provided that you don't need to be in school improvement in order to uh, give control and operations from one charter school to another charter school. That's a new May one uh, law uh, or part of a law that was already existing. And with that passage of that new VSEP, it does make it a little less necessary um, because of the introduction of fifty-three G five five two eight. And we saw SPA and Canyon Grove use that. And so the, the uh, the real pressure point that we might have been feeling to get some merger language approved has lessened. Just because there's another avenue that some of the schools asking uh, have. So that's why I did that bullet point. And then the merger language has posted uh, public notice and sought public comment. There's a responsibility to share out if there is anything and then there was not. Uh, and so there, we, we fulfilled that obligation. And I think one of the interesting things about And I think one of the interesting things about this one is that we're, we are getting some feedback from Olson, who's a member of the Authorization Committee, he's not here, he could speak for himself, but I'll try to kind of characterize what he, his thoughts were. And he shared, really likes the process, that would be the policy, the procedures, and the form. Really thought it was spot on, didn't have any edits or changes to the process, but did not think that the guidance document that supports our process was ready. Thought that that needed more vetting and some more work. And as he said it, you know, I concur, I think that there is some more vetting. That's a tough document to kind of put together because it tries to weave the policy, the procedures, and the forms kind of into a supporting document. Now, that supporting document is not necessary, which is why I think that there's a couple of potential board actions here. And why I'm calling it kind of like a jump shot or that field goal, and it could, could break either way, depending on how your board wants, or our board wants to go with it. But one is to approve the charter school merger process. We didn't get any feedback in the public comment. We ran it through numerous board committees and numerous board meetings. Even a member of one of the committees endorsed the process. It's critical of the guidance document, and so that's a possibility. Another, and there is a little bit less pressure, as I mentioned, a vertical point because of that new VSEP. And so another possibility is for staff, board committees, and maybe include some additional stakeholders to further refine the charter school merger process, just find little tweaks here and there if they're needed. And then to develop merger guidance document that can be used to support the process. And action, so those, and there's probably three other act items the board could take in addition to this. These are just potential or suggestions, trying to frame. Chair Bowles, back to your point, why we scheduled this two-hour meeting was to address these things that have been around for a while, now that they've gotten their proper posting and, and things of that nature, vetting. So questions, if there are any, otherwise, turn it back over to you Chair Bowles and our board to figure out what the next steps are.
Any questions to clarify from any of board members? All right, let's have, let's go to that item. Now, it's had those 30 days of public comment, we appreciate sharing comments that you have had. Ready for any board discussion? Please, Vice Chair Phillips.
So much, Chair. So I, I really like, the one thing that I, it's found in the guidance document, the charter school merger policy, that sort of speak to each other. Of merger approval on the second page, it's at the very top. For instance, Utah Code 16681103, which is the Nonprofit Corporation Act, and I really like that. And we guide that a plan of merger must be approved and adopted by each constituent corporation. And the requirement for approval differ based on the presence of members with voting rights. That may, that's clear to me even in the code itself. But it seemed to me that afterward, after this approval by each nonprofits presumably, that the merger itself should be approved by the authorizer of the surviving charter school. In other words, presumably, there could be an authorizer for each of these, or there could be a different one, as we saw with SPA and CGA, for instance. But the authorizer of the surviving school has given that school authorization to run a charter school under specific terms. And has already an existing agreement presumably with charter school. So before that merger can take place, in my opinion, it's not enough for the individual board or each corporation to approve that. Now you essentially have a different school that the authorized successor, this surviving charter school. In, you know, the case of SAW and CGA presents a really good example. Even had we authorized SAW to begin with, and these two schools wanted to merge, even after their own boards voted in favor of it. And of course, Salt Lake District voted in favor of it as well, in this case. We are still not the kind of, you know, we're assuming one of our authorized schools into another and fundamentally changing at least aspects of the charter. I realize that afterward, it's an emergency, surviving charter school will, at the very last bullet point in the policy, says the surviving charter school will collaborate with its authorizer to execute the charter contract and submit the required documentation to Utah State Charter School Board, Utah Charter School Finance Authority, if funds have been issued by, by that authority. Rather than simply the requirement that a new agreement be executed, I feel that the authorizer, the bilateral partner with that corporation that is the authorized charter school that survives, should have to approve that merger in the end. So that's, and I, I don't think that's a small thing, I think it's actually very substantive. And so I would say that because, what, what we don't want is a situation, and I don't think it was contemplated this way, but what we don't want is a situation where the boards of two nonprofit corporations who had authorized to run public schools by specific authorizers, or one authorizer, on their own can make an agreement as though it's unilateral when we are part of that bilateral agreement. So I do think that language has to be in there before I would feel comfortable voting for this process.
Thank you. Comments from Members Cisneros or Member Spiker relative to this?
No, although I do agree with where Member Phillips is coming from.
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to Vice Chair Phillips and say, so based on that, do you have a recommended action we could take today?
I would, I'd be keenly interested to know what Member Olson wanted provided in that guidance document that's different from what is in there, because if, if there's part of me that feels if he, because I, I think certainly needs more work in those areas that I've highlighted. And so I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to move to approve anything without knowing what other guidance would be needed.
Take an action that says you'd like it to be studied over whatever period of time we select and that it come back to us.
And I am going to make a motion.
All right, thank you.
I move that the, that the state charter school board directs staff to continue to work on the merger guidance document, the procedures, the policy, and the plan application form consistent with recommendations discussed in this board meeting, as well as recommendations from the authorizing committee, and bring that back to us in August or September. I, based on recommendations also from our representatives from the Attorney General's office.
All right, there's a motion to, for this, the study to be taken. Is being so consistent and attending as you're able to with us. And that's pretty consistently, so thank you. All right, we're ready to consider this third item, acting item, which is state charter school board charter agreement. To the charter agreement, and any public comments, again, Director Kramer.
Great. I think a layup, as we had, and we probably ought to work on the jump shot a little bit more with the last one, with the analogy there, but this one has also been in numerous board meetings. This particular agenda item has been in numerous board committee meetings. This is a task that was started, and I say completed or nearly completed, by AAG Kevin Olson and reviewed our new AAGs to some extent. They're still getting familiar with different parts of what we do, but we're working really, we really enjoy working with them. And so public notice and seeking public comment has also taken place. But today, need to pull up the document, if it's appropriate to review, and seek to finalize the document. And then we can move into just suggested board action items and then next steps. So Marie, if you could pull up that document? This would be the charter agreement. So I think I'll lead through some of it, and then you'll lead through some of it. And the Authorization Committee gave a lot of feedback at the last meeting and asked us to address that feedback, and so that's why we needed the Authorization Committee's work, and we did do that. If you could scroll to, let's go to an easy strikeout, just to make sure that we all see it. That one right there, no longer is a legal requirement, and so is an easy strikeout. We no longer will be reviewing pieces because it's a statutory requirement, that's removed. If you scroll down to another easy one, I think it's a whole bunch of questions, right there? Seemed out of place, and so everybody concurred, including the Authorization Committee, that in a formal document like this, even though they're good questions, that's going to be struck from the agreement. And then we turn our attention to two blue sections, a little bit more complex. And go up one more section, Marie, because they're in different places, and, but they are, have some relatedness.
I think it would be.
16?
Nine, D and E, yeah.
Nine, D and E.
And then 16.
So nine and, scroll down, just to familiarize our board, what we're talking about. I think that Vice Chair Phillips, you led a lot of the questions on this particular thing. Are we at 16?
This is nine, D and E.
Okay, go, go to 16 and just reference it real quick as well, no, it's jumping around.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. So nine and 16 have some relatedness to, to them. Right next, right, not right next to each other, there is some relatedness to that. And so we really worked with the Authorization Committee to ask questions, you know, does the insurance be in play that were listed as underneath the insurance, to the top part? And the Authorization Committee and a lot of Eric Olson's input in this particular one was that it's good to have that in there, it's, it's protecting and it's a good aspect. Now, he went on to explain, and I, in some ways, I wish he was here, so I have to try to do attorney, but I'll try, try my best to, I'm trying to characterize when he said, you know, the insurance companies don't cover everything though all the time either. And so that's where the section 16 was also, in his view, in the Authorization Committee's view, an important part to keep in the agreement. And I think that there was some question, just around ideas, just of, is this too much, kind of overkill, or kind of, you know, and I'm really trying to summarize it, I know there was way more that went into it. Or should we leave it in there? And I think what we got from the Authorization Committee was, let's leave it in there. It's an important part that protects the state charter school board.
Section 16.
Both, 16 and nine, yeah. And then, in addition to passing it through the Authorization Committee, our Assistant Attorney Generals also were asked to take a look at this. And I think that AAG Kirk would also, I think that you were prepared to speak on this if necessary, because it became part of continued conversations as to why nine and 16, from the view of the AAG's office, was important to keep in here. And so I'm hopeful that our other AAG, you know, great, but that she gave you the information and that you could speak to that, Kirk, if you're still online. So he concurred, or they concurred, that it should be kept in there, that's in summary. And the rationale was that it provides some additional protection. The insurance is one protection, and, and then the demification in 16 is an additional one. So that's what staff has reported, as we've brought it up to different groups. And it's one of the things that this board was still wrestling with as it relates to the agreement, so. I, that really, the last section, let's go in entirety, and then we can turn it over. The last section, Marie, if you'd speak to this, that'd be great.
Thank you. Yes, the last section, the Schedule A, which is now, I guess, taking the place of the Exhibit A as far as naming. A few things that we noted as staff, we did name of charter schools repeated, so that was one recommendation, to maybe just only have that once. And then otherwise, a few just edits here. We wanted to make sure that what was in the beginning of our agreement matched what was in Schedule A. What is required in the code is that we document the opening date. And that is also, is listed on Page Two, the opening date. And so we struck out a year, and so just putting in that whole opening date would be more consistent between the code as well as what is on Page Two, a charter agreement. The charter agreement, Page Two, code also asks, asks for the grade levels that are being served as well as the maximum enrollment. And so for simplification, staff is suggesting that we just do that, the grade levels that are served, as well as that maximum enrollment number, rather than breaking down into each individual grade level within their charter agreement. We typically have given schools that flexibility, that, you know, rather than saying you can only have six, ten first graders. You know, if there's a 66th first grader and they have that space with a max enrollment, or that they have that ability to enroll, that's where, where they need them within their school, as long as they are in their max enrollment cap. And then, see, the, the other one too, that we really wanted to make sure we talked about, was this concept of these minimum performance standards. That, that terminology is used within code, minimum performance standards. And then we've been working on these academic, financial, and governance frameworks. And so we find, how could we marry those, those two terminologies, two pieces together? And those are going to be individualized to the school. And so those would be then, as they are individualized, they'll be memorialized within their charter agreement. And so a recommendation would be that we include that language here. A charter school's minimum performance standards, adding in known as the CSP Academic Financial and Governance Frameworks, shall be as follows, and then we can insert those specific to each school within their charter agreement. We could either put all three of those into number 10. We could either put all three of those into Number 10 and, you know, format that. If we did that, then we could strike out, of course, Number 12 with those financial standards, since it would already be up with Number 10. And then the rest of it would remain the same. That would then also, as a suggestion, sorry, one more scroll, that's really big, necessitate up at the beginning, on Page Two, Section G, it again reference for schools' minimum performance standards, and so we have consistency, we were just adding that there. So, the minimum performance standards, known as the SCSP Academic Financial Governance Frameworks, are set within Schedule A. So that would be the recommendation from the team as they review this in working with schools as they do their support work.
Just last, I wanted to try to just channel Eric Olson, member Eric Olson's, he said, and this is not live, this is probably two weeks ago. The question, why is it necessary for the charter school to name State Charter School Board as additional insured on a liability insurance policy? My response would be, because that's just what you do. It doesn't mean the insurance will necessarily hundred percent of potential liabilities. That is what the indemnity in our contract is for, to fill any gap between coverage and liability. And so we have the two strike-throughs that were easier ones. We have nine and sixteen pauses, which is generated some conversation and some work. And we have the cleanup of Schedule A, merely according to the new marks. And I turn it back over to you Chair Bowles.
Thank you so much, thanks for those updates and for the additional comments. I expect others may want to continue that discussion and comments now, that's our job. Have any need to comment or ask questions relative to the Charter Agreement update.
I prefer someone online who I wanted to have.
Member Spiker, Member Sisneros, if either of you do.
If I could just have a question, one, well, comment, thank you staff, I feel heard. I felt like the discussion was well captured in the discussion that we had, certainly was researched in. I keep trying to scroll this to see the, you should see me officially working my mouse to try to scroll off the, it's not working.
I can just, where do we want to go?
So, just as a, because as you guys know, I've been down this road in a way that Marie made a comment earlier that I fully support, which is how do we make this as easy for staff to navigate and implement? I don't want to use the word, but that's what came to my mind over the years. And so, although I understand the antecedent for adding that known as the State Charter School Board Framework into there, I am just wondering if that will be problematic at some point, that title change is, kind of like when we put test names in, then we end up with charters with capital letter test names and then everybody gets all heartburn about the name as opposed to, you mean standardized testing from the state, right? Whether you call it RISE or whatever we call it. But I know that that's caught, that idea of capitalization and bringing up our names does in some time come back to us. And so I'm just kind of wondering other thoughts on that and if we'd be undoing the...
Thank you, Members Sisneros. Member Spiker, any additional comment?
I don't have anything additional at this time.
Thank you, all right. Vice Chair Phillips?
So, kind of piggybacking initially on a fairly non-controversial item, piggybacking on what Member Sisneros has said, I'm looking at Section 8B. And I, because I want to say in advance that I absolutely support having in Exhibit A or, you know, Appendix A, the performance measures that we are sort of agreeing with the school that they will look at, and of course they can come and amend those, right? But I wonder as well, I love for things that are administrative to be able to be changed administratively as needed and not to be memorialized or setting concrete in a contract that's harder to change. And so I wonder about the minimum financial standards for operating a charter school, having those set forth in Schedule A. There are a lot of those already in code and admin code. And then we have imposed some administrative things like days cash on hand, for instance. And I'm wondering if, much like the fact that some of these names may become obsolete, will those become obsolete as we, I remind you of sort of how the anticipated enrollment of a charter school has often become obsolete, because as it turns out, they have a different target population, they have a different enrollment, and they're still able to thrive, you know, as they adjust to that. So, you know, we took out Section 10, or Item Three under B3, because those were questions that we may or may not want to ask going forward, right? Depending on what we decide is best practice. I'm wondering if we do not, if we reference minimal, minimum financial standards that are in code or admin code and, or simply say, have some more generic statement relating to minimum financial standards that set up by the authorizer. Because those are going to relate to code and admin code, and they're also going to be things that the authorizer feels are best practices. But if we set, the minute we set them forth in Schedule A, then they have to come back and be amended again if they change for some reason, either in code or in admin code or just in our own framework, right? So I agree with Member Sisneros that the broader that we keep that and the more, the more we are able to change those administratively when either law or board rule changes or our framework changes, I think that would be best. So I just, and that's 8B, I wonder if we do not put that in Schedule A, but we look at it another way. And then, I just want to throw out some ideas, and I'm hoping board members and, you know, maybe Vice Superintendent Stallings can chime in on some of this, but when you name somebody as an, I'm now on, I've gone to Section, hold on, nine, yes, nine, D and E. When you name somebody as an additionally insured, you're essentially insuring them against third-party claims, you know, for something that should happen. Somebody comes to work on my property, it's a school property, and you, and they name the school as an additionally insured, so that when their guy falls off the roof, the school isn't left paying for those medical benefits when that was their employee. We don't, we don't want them to be able to sue the school and their own employers who maybe didn't have them follow OSHA or something. So first of all, that's what that's for, and, you know, I can remember a time some years ago, maybe it's been even five or six, when a student was hit in front of a charter school and there was some allegation at the time that maybe the cross-swap guarding hadn't been appropriate or whatever, and made, and that there was some discussion about suing the State Charter School Board as well as the charter school. Maybe there's some wisdom in that. But, on the other hand, remember that Utah Code also allows the State Charter School Board to be sued as a group, and it also allows its individual members to be sued. And one of the things we have to remember about contracts is that you cannot, you cannot circumvent statute by something in a contract. So you can indemnify everything this way to Christmas, and you can still sue members of the State Charter School Board as a group or as an individual. And especially, I would imagine, if they were actually negligent or intentionally harmful, whatever the words are in Section 16. And so I worry that, I worry that we're in this kind of a position as well, is that, a couple of things, I don't think I know of any charter school that I've ever been affiliated with that has actually sent the SCSB certificates of insurance annually, whether or not the SCSB has been named as an additionally insured, just even to proof of insurance. And maybe they have, no charter school that I've ever worked with has done that, has sent that to their authorizer, and that would also be a very, very huge, they're required to do it by law, but that essentially puts us in the position of administering and confirming that that's happened with our 130 charter schools that we actually, you know, authorize. So I think that's an administrative nightmare, and I think we should just ask them to follow law like they, like we already do. And the second thing is, imagine that because individuals can sue the State Charter School Board as individuals or as a group, that we who are already somewhat indemnified by our, at least when we're acting in our positions as an appointed, a governor-appointed board, we are indemnified largely, and imagine a situation where either a private insurance company is covering a public agency. And if that's the case, what if it's the school itself who decides to sue the State Charter School Board? So now, are you essentially, you have been, you're either having risk being sued by someone else covered by risk or having an insurance company that has named the State Charter School Board as an additionally insured being, being, that is suing the State Charter School Board under its own insurance policy. I'm simply not even sure that this sort of an arrangement is actually workable, given the statute that allows the State Charter School Board and its members individually to be sued. Or if, if this is at a territory that we want to get into. So I would personally like to see, like to have an opportunity, maybe with our AAGs here or in some kind of an ad hoc committee for this purpose, I would like to flesh this out more because I think that it's a, it's not nearly as, I think, I think it's been included because it's largely boilerplate, you know, which even Member Olson, at least by hearsay, has suggested that, you know, you put it in because you do. And really hasn't contemplated the statute that talks about the fact that the State Charter School Board can be sued and its individual members can be sued, and doesn't contemplate what kind of a situation this might put both risk in, the Attorney General's office in, as well as charter schools trying to get private insurance, which now has to yearly indemnify a public agency. Because most of our charters do have private insurance and not risk. So, anyway, I just, I don't feel comfortable. My vote so far on the way that this is right now is a no. And so, I don't feel comfortable without more vetting of those particular items. And I will say, I also think those will be difficult for at least some of our schools to embrace.
Thank you. So I'm hearing our concerns relative to making the agreement too specific, potentially, that we try to be as broad as possible to give us flexibility and working forward. And that Section Nine particularly, am I accurate in that, is, has questions?
I have questions about sixteen, but I think that it's the type of thing that if the State Charter School Board or one of its members did something terribly negligent and harmful, that would not hold up in court anyway, frankly, because it's one of those things that, that it doesn't necessarily align with statute the way it's written about our board specifically. But nine is what's giving me the most heartburn.
Right, but I'm also going to include them in that question about sixteen and how it functions in that agreement. So with that in mind, I'm, and I'm not hearing additional discussion at this point. So I'm looking for a proposal, a motion of how we can move forward relative to this. Does someone have a motion? Vice Chair Phillips, would you mind?
Not at all. I would like to move that the State Charter School Board directs staff to, to investigate further the, those paragraphs of the agreement that have been discussed in this board meeting with the possibility of even an ad hoc committee to look into areas of concern. And that this investigation include our Assistant Attorney General representatives and others with expertise in this area.
All right, I'll make comment, but let's, we have a motion on the table first. And do I have a second to that motion?
This is Member Spiker, and I'll second that motion.
All right, a second to that motion by Member Spiker. So let's hear any additional discussion. I just want to make one, just one comment, that would, just saying how important this agreement is. So I'm in favor of taking plenty of time to make sure everything's in place and it's right. Because this is, we want it to be clear, we want it to be understandable, no one has question in it. Because this essentially is our agreement, this is, it is agreement, this agreement document, it is, both parties need to understand, and we're agreeing on these elements. So everyone needs to understand all the parts of it, and it's really important that we get it right. So I personally am in favor of taking more time than less to make sure that that happens correctly. So, any other discussion on that motion? All right, an ad hoc, do you have any, did you add any timeline to that? All right.
Might take that with our new people.
All right, so, just with, in a timely way perhaps, right? Okay, thank you. So, I'm not hearing additional discussion, so I'm ready to take vote on the motion for that to continue in the way that the motion calls out. Member Sisneros, how do you vote on that motion?
Yes.
Member Spiker?
Yes.
Yes, and Vice Chair Phillips?
Yes.
Yes, and I voted yes as well, if that motion passes. I'll make this one little additional comment relative to Sections Nine and Sixteen with our legal representatives who give us really good advice. But I would like to make sure that Vice Chair Phillips is part of that ad hoc. Who's that are you? All right, to represent that, thank you so much. All right, here's a case.
Here's a case where next steps, we're jumping a little too fast and there are, layups are missed more often than not, a lot of times in middle school, right? Got to keep working and got to keep practicing, and staff is poised, ready to support the direction of the board here, so thank you for your, your work on this one. We needed, more than anything, we, we appreciate the direction and the clarity on what to do next, so.
All right, let's move to our next item, which is a discussion, an action item, State Charter School Board Operational Space and Indirect Cost, Executive Director Kramer.
Great, so a suggestion is to just begin this agenda item with the end in mind for operational space. That's because there's some information that we'll present, but it's difficult to present all the information, and it's difficult because it's very fluid. We get new information or we get new counsel and different advice, and so, so beginning with the end in mind for the operational space, and here's a potential end in mind, potential, is maybe the executive leadership is authorized to execute details of a potential move. So maybe the board views that there's enough vetted in the public meetings and to have the board executive leadership and/or, so you got kind of an and or, this board did with SPA and Cannon Grove Academy, turn it over to staff to navigate and to work through some of the details, and/or full board, that this is a big enough item, that our full board needs enough detail and enough of it. So I think that's where staff could use some guidance here, is knowing how far do we keep going with some of the questions and the uncovering? Because you're kind of like, it's an onion, right? You'll kind of learn something and then you kind of learn something more, and then you collaborate, and then you need to collaborate more. And so there's a certain element, so that's beginning with the end in mind for the operational space as we present out on this agenda item. And then another thing to be mindful of is potential timing. In the last few meetings, it's been discussed that we're trying to do it's been discussed that we're trying to do planning work and research for a potential July first, twenty twenty four move out. There, uh, very well could be some things that slow that down, which we'll discuss, uh, here in the presentation. Uh, but there's also a path where it could get done. Uh, and so I think, uh, this board being mindful of, you know, do we continue to want to have our staff, uh, push and, and keep working on these things? Or do we need to slow? And that's why a suggestion for the December first, twenty twenty four, and even more time is the third suggestion is taking another year. Um, and then we're going to, in this presentation, provide some details, not all the details, related to moving out of operational space, and then allow some discussion related to moving out of operational space, then some details related to indirect costs, discussion related indirect costs, and then board action related to operational space. So that's just a slide that presents what we're going to be doing with the next ten or fifteen minutes of our time, something like that. And so moving out of USB operational space, this is some of the detail. Um, staff has been pursuing a Cottonwood Heights location. We already mentioned it last time. The owner of this, uh, the landlord is called Regis. It's, it's a shared, uh, facility. And, uh, a cost comparison, uh, is just twelve thousand dollars is in our current fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. And versus, this is nineteen thousand, five hundred eighty-eight plus. There are some smaller fees, uh, not thousands of dollars, but some hundreds of dollars fees depending on, uh, you know, some different choices. So didn't want to put all those down. Uh, there is a task of trying to understand and analyze square footage. And so kind of trying to do an apples to apples. It's a task that we've learned of, uh, that I'm going to talk about the, division of facility and, and construction management, or the department rather. And, and so when you look at how much, uh, square foot, uh, we have that's private and secure and things like that at the Utah State Board of Education, my office and Marie's office combined is two hundred and seventy-five. And then there's shared space, like the cubicles is really a shared space uh, with two other divisions and the cubicles just kind of separate out that in an organized fashion. So we'd suggest that you consider and think about the two hundred and seventy-five of kind of a separate office in order to try to do an apples to apples. It's never going to get quite there. Versus a hundred and twenty-two square feet at this Cottonwood Heights location. And then again, there's a lot of shared space there. Like there's a lot of shared space here, uh, with the cubicle structure or the boardroom or, uh, office breakout conference rooms. There's also a lot of uh, shared space opportunities at the Cottonwood Heights location. And so then some of the things that were associated services with moving out of the USBE operational space that needed to be considered is just mail services. And so that's a cost, it's an indirect cost that the state charter school board pays. It gets close to four thousand dollars, maybe it's three thousand seven hundred. I can't remember exactly. It's, it's close to that amount. And, um, and the mail services would be provided at the Cottonwood Heights location at no additional cost. It's not one of the plus after the nineteen five eight eight. It is included in the nineteen five eight eight. And so there is, uh, uh, mail services there. I did get a chance at the query of some different questioning, how much mail we have incoming and outgoing. We've received, uh, three letters, we believe, since July first. And we've, uh, mailed out zero letters since July first. And so that gives you the idea of how much, because we are really, uh, electronically, almost exclusively electronically moving documents and things like that. Another associated service with moving out of the USBE operational space is support services. And so in the Cottonwood Heights location, there is, uh, a front desk, uh, reception and also direction and guidance and that type of assistant positions, which is supportive. Very supportive to know where you're going, where the meeting is. We appreciate what we have here and that would be uh, included with the nineteen five eight eight. Um, and then the internet, uh, when querying the operations group at Regis, which is leasing out the Cottonwood Heights location, uh, they assured that the speed anyways was adequate and that there would be enough, uh, um, security in those lines to opportunities for security. So at least the internet phones and those types of related associated services are included with the nineteen five eight eight. And so that's one aspect of the details of the operational space. What we've been doing to try to research, understand, talking with, uh, you know, different people to understand. The second, or the, this next bullet point is really a very recent, uh, development. And so potentially needs approval in order to occur. Potentially needs approval in order to occur. And so what we mean by that is for over a month or so, Marie and I have been working with the Department of, uh, Facilities and Construction Management, a group that, uh, supports state agencies of which we are not, we kind of learn of that as we have correspondence. We appreciate the correspondence from the USBE on, on these matters. Because that's how we learn and grow and try to give this board information. Uh, and so there is, uh, what's, uh, some board rule at DFCM uh, that verbally they let us know it, it would not be needed. But then just recently, they did share with us after a meeting with the USBE, that in fact, they did want, uh, to, to use some of their approval board rule, but more as a guideline. And that was in a last correspondence that I had uh, from the DFCM, is that, uh, his name's Lee, who we've been working with. He called it more of a guideline. That does intersect though of with USBE and as they are a state agency and we are not a state agency. And what's being brought to light is some of the requirements as we know that they're held to and we are definitely underneath and, and a part of that. And so that's something for consideration to slow up, uh, potentially slow up this, uh, deal. For example, one of the things in there is that you need to give notification six months prior to, uh, new lease. Well, we, we want meet that, right? For July first, twenty twenty four, if held to that standard, while it's viewed as a guideline from the DFCM, USBE's characterization is in, in, in development. And I think that they're, you know, positioning to say the USBE would want to follow that board rule or to some degree. And so we're kind of working through that. There are some clauses or terms at the Cottonwood Heights location that would still need to be negotiated and worked out. They're all in progress to different degrees because you've asked staff to research and work on. And so we tried to find barriers, roadblocks, why? And so this is, uh, not a roadblock, but there are at least one clause that we're aware of that would need to be removed almost in its entirety, or it would need to be redrafted. And so, uh, that's, uh, something that needs to be considered. Uh, cost comparison, uh, justifications, uh, making sure that the cost is within the school fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Uh, from my analysis of the budget, I, I see it, it does fit. Uh, just as, as lunch today happened and you have conversations with people, uh, it wasn't yet, um, looked at by USBE as to whether or not the nineteen five eight eight would fit within budget. And then there's an approval for payment in the USBE system. Um, we did process a request for payment. Just try, this is really a unique and special thing. Uh, so not knowing if it might need more uh, care and just kind of collaboration and understanding. So, uh, we put out and rejected rightfully so. It needed some additional documentation. Um, but that approval in the USBE system is also bound to some of the different requirements of similar to a request for proposal or at least a fair, uh, process to make sure that, um, um, taxpayers' dollars are being used wisely. And so it's a pretty significant vetting process that we're running into with this, and I'm trying to capture it with these four bullet points underneath this potentially needs approval in order to occur. We're aware of the law that changed, uh, that says that we can move out. And so there's also that to consider for this board. Um, but those are some things. And then I just wanted to, uh, we wanted to, uh, sugge, uh, say that there's a secondary location that's also being explored, uh, even today, a drive-by today and a scheduled meeting for next week. It's a state-owned facility, uh, that's in West Jordan. And it's a nice, uh, three-story building, semi-move-in-ready, shared space with corrections, not, uh, with the administration of corrections. And so we're really, um, interested in fully vetting out not just the primary location, although we thought it important to kind of position something because that's how we get answers to a lot of these things. We don't really know the process unless we kind of uh, move our way through the process because it's, this process is unchartered. So, and so that's why we've been pushing as staff to get a primary location. We love the location. Uh, it could be lost today, uh, tomorrow. That's the nature of real estate. We know that. Um, and so that's why I also put on there the July first and the earlier slide for the board to consider is just kind of like that, you know, do we need to keep pushing? Does the executive leadership push on it? And/or with administration or and/or with the full board? And that was trying to keep the, the, kind of the idea of, um, you know, keeping the end in mind for what we're looking for from the board. So with that, we want to pause and we just want to see if there is any discussion because we can't answer, we can't present all the information. It'd be a long report and we just didn't get to doing that. But instead, we're prepared to answer some questions to the best of our ability. We have other, uh, stakeholders here, very obviously from the USBE that may, uh, be, so I'm going to turn over to you, Chair Bowles, if there's any discussion related. And I didn't get into the, um, indirect costs because that's a little bit less pressing. Right? That's more, it's the next slide. So although that's around this issue, it's not central to the move out of operational space.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Right, let's have a good discussion about it. Um, we, we, we know, we see advantages and disadvantages. We appreciate all the support service that we get in this building, like this meeting today, for example. And there are things that are really very useful and helpful to have and connections. And being close to folks who are, uh, at the state board of education level, who are doing that work and have that close quick connection back and forth, you know, you can be here and be a part of it. But, but we also see the potential that it's nice to have our own identity somewhere else. Used to be in this building, Utah Association of Elementary School Principals, and also the Utah Association of Secondary School Principals used to be in this building and State Board of Education, um, needed space and asked them to move to new places. They found new places to move over time and elementary school folks bought their own building and continued, and I'm not sure what secondary folks are doing it currently. I gave them some space and data set at the time, but they, they did some, they, they have continued their service. So it is possible to do that and in some ways gives them their own identity apart. And that's partly what we think. And so we balance that, our own identity, a place that gives us our own identity and a place that is, that physically, you just physically identified in a spot, right? You, you have that just symbolically is, that move gives you, uh, your own identity. But also knowing that there are a lot of things that we may not even have considered that are important for us to continue to do our work. I think we've tried to think through those. But, but we need to be really, we, we're being cautious to, to make sure we've got everything covered so that we don't say, hey, we'd like to move out. It's like children leaving their parents, right? Moving out on their own and knowing, will I be able to to still do all the things that I have, that I want to do and so I can support this other group. So well, it's more like married children, I guess, because we've got all these children we've got to take care of too, right? So here we are moving our, our, us and our married children out from grandparents' home and, and is that the right thing to do? And will we still be able to do all of what we need to do? So it's a balance. It's worth discussion and that's kind of what we've considered. So, anyone who would like to chime in, those online, those here, we'd love to hear some thought. And I'm seeing Deputy Superintendent Jones would like to give us some, some thoughts and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, Deputy Superintendent of Operations Scott Jones, uh, for the Utah State Board of Education, not speaking for the board. Um, but just, could we pull the slide back up on the s- square footage discussion? So I just, if I may through you Chair, just to, to get clarification from, um, Dr. Kramer, um, you have, you have two offices here and ten cubicles. The ten cubicles are eight by eight cubicles. So that would be six hundred and forty square feet just in your cubicle space, your own. That's no one else's. That's not shared. That's not anything too. So it's gone from ten to eight. Like around the COVID time, data and statistics had to go in there because we were doing so much with COVID things. But right now, as it stands, the state charter school board staff have ten cubicles and two offices. So that in itself is more square footage than you would have in the other building for less money. So, I mean, if we're just strictly just analyzing this straight from a square footage or aspect, it, based on what we know and what we were told from DFCM, uh, of Lee, we talked to Lee too, is that they have, um, an issue with just that aspect of it, is why would an agency like the USBE support any one of a component or part of their department, right? And I, I'm just the messenger. I'm not saying that, you know, you belong to us or whatever. It's not that, right? It's just that DFCM's eyes, when we met with them, it was clear that they didn't understand, Lee didn't understand that you're not a state agency. And if you look at the rule I sent to both of you as well, Chair Bowles and Vice Chair Phillips, it even cascades down beyond it. Uh, he did a great job talking about the sixty-day notice and so that sixty-day notice would have to come from the USBE saying, hey, we want to look at alternative space for a particular slice, if you will, of our department, right? Or our agency. Then it also is very clear that they actually go out and look for space for you. Not the section, not the, they're, they're an integral part of that. So when we met with DFCM because they asked us to meet with them because they had questions about, well, to, and you know, I'm not disputing that, uh, Dr. Kramer didn't, wasn't told that, you know, it's guidelines, but that is not what Lee told us. Lee didn't say these are guidelines. He was more of to the tune of, hey, I can't violate these. I can't, we have to follow the process in this rule. And again, you both have a copy of the rule. So my, my suggestion would be that both staff meet with Lee at the same time. So that, and I'll own in, maybe I misunderstood Lee, you know, from DFCM. But his questions were along that line because, and Dr. Kramer said this very, Kramer said this very well, is that they have, they have a lot of issues with the, the current lease that it is. And he's right, it would have to be negotiated with that. But the timeline here is not subject to the USBE. It's really subject to DFCM and their rule. Um, following it because it doesn't say a component unit or a part of an agency. It says the agency. And, you know, we, we, over the years since I've been here, I've always suggested that, well, if you really want to move or get out, you need to become your own agency, right? And I think we've explored that and we've met all different levels of resistance across the state. So, so, okay, I mean, no one's opposed to or going to stand in your way of whatever your decision is. All we're trying to do is just make sure that the processes and rules are followed that by way of our understanding of them. I'm not saying that I'm not saying that your director doesn't understand, not at all. I mean, we're just, we're both getting, he's right, this is uncharted territory. I just wanted to make sure though that we're clear on the square footage aspect of what's available to you. You probably said that. I just want to make sure that you know that you have more square footage for less money, like than, than you would get from another building, right? Well, well, for the ones you're looking at right now. I mean, I, but that's what DFCM helps with, is they may ask you to look at other state agency vacant spaces or, you know, like Corrections has a whole new big building, right? And they have plenty of space in there. So you wouldn't pay near what you might hear with them. And it's DFCM that helps facilitate any, any agency, not just us, right? But that's, oh, I, I just encourage you to take a look at that rule and as it applies. And then if, you know, Lee says, well, these are just guidelines, here we can, you, maybe there's waivers or something. I, I don't know. That's probably something that we would need to look at together. But the timeline that they're on is much different than, you know, what we do. It, it's really dictated by their own rule. So, I, you know, just, just to consider that. And then I'm tracking that the O and M portion for the State Charter School Board is only $7,200. So because recall, this building is paid off. So all we're paying for is O and M, right? With DFCM and to, and your portion and, you know, Director Jacobson's back here, by our calculations, is only $7,200. So, you know, we need to get together on that too, so, yeah. Yeah. So I mean, you know, we're, we, we can continue to work together. I just ask that you consider the DFCM rule as it would apply to this process, that we're willing to support and to take with you. And if DFCM says, well, we'll waive it or do whatever, fine, you know, that, that's fine. Maybe that's where the, you know, guidelines thing comes up. I've never heard anybody refer to a rule as a guideline though, so. So, and Mr. Lee did say, I'm not saying he didn't with Paul, but, you know, we just, I think we should both meet with DFCM at the same time next time, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I have to make it clear, I think to a person, we definitely want to do, whatever we do, want to follow process and make sure things are done accurately as we carefully consider this decision. And that's why I tried to represent it the first two, there are pluses and minuses, right? And what, what do, you know, what should we, are we carefully considering all of the aspects? Because sometimes you don't notice, when you're a fish in water, you don't notice the water until somebody says, hey, nice water. Oh, yeah, or until you leave that water, you say, oh, the other water was a lot better than this one. So, so we have to consider all those, those pieces, so we appreciate it. So, yes, so.
Not long, I just want a couple of things because per the questioning was just on the stuff that we're reporting. Love working with, with you and your team. Just, I mean, it's just good to get the conversation and get the clarity and everything like that. So you're, we really appreciate it. I think with the square footage analysis, just trying to provide the alternative idea because it's hard to make an apples-to-apples for something like Regis, which is very cutting-edge, very, I mean, this is very, this is a forward-thinking way of doing business. It takes the work environment and really modernizes it. Cubicles is not ideal. If we were to have our way, we'd probably do away with the cubicles and create a lot of shared space. And so it's hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison. So I tried to do the best that I could, calling the cubicle space, shared space, just like if you were to go into the Regis Cottonwood location, you would see a whole bunch of private and pull-out and different opportunities. So I just wanted to respond to that kind of question a little bit. And then, you know, you know, I really wanted to get not just the verbal, but something written from, because I've been working with them for about a month and a half or something like that. And his sentence was, the timeline outlined in the R23212 new leases is a guideline, period.
The timeline.
The timeline outlined in the R23212 new leases is a guideline. So that's just where we kind of polled and reported that out. And then the, the two numbers that we're looking at for the, what we're going to call Buildings, Grounds, Operations Supply, 6171. 6171 shows up both in the 25CHBD and in the 25CHFA. And you might be referring just to the 25CHBD, but then when you add those two numbers, you know, both of them being 6171s, you get the 12,000. So I'm just trying to bring clarity to the, the idea that there's 7,000, when we believe through our analysis that the reality is that there's 14,000. So that's just, those are just a couple of points that I wanted to clarify or kind of bring back.
All right. I, I'd like to go to any others who have comments, and then we'll circle back around again if there are additional comments from anyone, and then we can go in a place. Yes, Vice Chair Phillips.
So I have a question because I know that in a previous discussion in a board meeting, my memory may be flawed here, that we discussed, and I know that Member Cisneros had wanted detail of the nature that you're giving today, which I appreciated from her. And it seemed as though beyond the actual physical space, there was a, a number, an amount that, that we pay for services beyond mail, support and internet, that you were also comparing by way of which one of these comes naturally with the, with the services or with the cost of a space, which others would have to be purchased sort of independently or even by way of personnel? And, and I remember that it seemed as though, and maybe I made this up in my head, that that number was fairly significant here, and maybe it isn't. I'd like to know. And wasn't particularly significant in the new place. So beyond space, maybe that's the indirect costs you were talking about.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I, yeah, okay, then, then that's, maybe I'll just wait then for your, for your next slide. Okay.
All right. Let me make sure if Members Cisneros or Member Spiker have a comment that we entertain those, their thinking and what they would like to say. Either of you?
I, Member Cisneros, if I could just reiterate, I, although I want to support staff in having the space that they need to do their work in the very best way, but like, I am very fiscally conservative, and it's even more glaring that we see to Superintendent's point that we have this large space for a really a, a low amount of money. So that just still is my concern about fiscal responsibility and being conservative in that area. And that's, and I know we have the money, I, we just won't always have the.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you. Member Spiker, was there any additional comment that you need to make? All right.
No, I just, oh, no, I just wanted to say I, I am really appreciating the conversation because the comments that I'm hearing from other board members are poignant.
Thank you.
That's all, thanks.
Thanks. And I don't want to move past Deputy Superintendent Jones, I definitely want to hear what you have to say as well. I'm kind of at that place, and I'm not sure if others are at that place. I'm kind of feeling like we need some, this is, we're not going to make a, a decision today. We're not going to be able to take action today. I think we need some additional exploration and discussion unless I hear objection to that from anyone and so that I'm off-base. So I'm at that place of saying we need continued conversation and, and discussion, that this has, should come back in a future meeting for us to talk. We won't meet at July 1 deadline, and so we need to have some, some time, right? Now, with that in mind, it may be Deputy Superintendent Jones, what you were going to discuss is one of those things that should be discussed, but if you'd like to make an additional comment, we'd love to hear.
Yeah. And I'll be very quick. Others, so I won't say other sections within the USBE have asked us to modify their space for a more collaborative workspace. So please just consider that as well, right? If, if you don't like the cubicle approach, you know, I, I'd encourage you to go downstairs and see what was built in the IT infrastructure and then across the hall where it's just basically kind of a hoteling workspace that anyone can use down there, but we could certainly look into those types of things too. I do understand that, that you're next to other se, other sections of the, sections of the USBE, right? So I mean, if, if you wanted, because I, I think what we're talking a lot about, Regis is similar to, from my understanding, to what's called Work Day, right? Where you can, you know, anyone can lease the space and have the area to do their jobs and to, we could try to accommodate that too, but inevitably wherever you go, I think you would have a shared space aspect to that area too, right? You'd have your own space. I'm not sure if doors would separate or those types of things, but, you know, which certainly is not the case up there. But we could certainly, we could look at that though. We could put maybe, you know, a wall down, down the middle and close you off in that area, and then you can, I, I just ask you to consider that along the lines of what the Chair just said is, and then, you know, last meeting too, there was discussion about signage and place of your own. I, I mean, I can't speak for the board, I can't speak for DFCM on what's appropriate, proper signage, right? But we certainly could accommodate some kind of outside signage that recognizes that you're here, where you're at. I mean, you know, one of the things was, well, you have to, you know, you're up on the second floor. Well, if my understanding is correct, in Cottonwood, it would be the fifth floor, right? So I mean, you know, those nuances I think are probably important for your decision-making process. We want to help. We want to support. We want to provide you all the data and information you need to do it. Along, and just real quickly, along the lines of the 12,000, yeah, that's fine. I was talking about the one, the 7,200 one, but I, I see Paul's math in that, I see that application. But even if you take 12,000 and you compare it to what you would likely pay to some of those, if cost avoidance is a decision-making point for you, though, that needs to be vetted out too because that's part of what DFCM is supposed to help agencies with, is to say, well, you know, here's an area that you actually end up saving money or you break even with what you're spending now in those buildings. Those types of things can be, but slow is smooth, smooth is fast. You know, we, we certainly can do this together and work it out. So his 12,000 number is right. I'm just saying that, you know, if you just look at the 125 component, it's year 25 is 7,200, so, yeah. Those types of things, so thanks.
Thank you. We know your support of you wouldn't be here today to try to help to talk through issues. Vice Chair Phillips?
It seems to me too that, I mean, we've put that July, July, July 1 is always such a great number, you know, date because it's the start of the fiscal year. But as we know, and, and we've become more collaborative with Vice Superintendent Jones' office and group, that if there isn't, if this board should decide, i- i- if, if the USBE has in fact already approved our budget for the coming school year, which does not reflect a move, let's say, and we decide that it's appropriate and we've worked with the proper authorities, DFCM, the, the proper individuals here within the USBE with whom we would, even if we were to move, we would, we would, by necessity and by law, continue to have a very close relationship. We would be able to go back to the board, meaning the USBE, and ask for an amendment to that budget that reflected what was approved by these different agencies and by best practice and best procurement processes and so on. So even though we were thinking July 1, I, I like the idea of vetting this fully, and really there is no specific date on which it has to be done or not done by. It can be done whenever this board thinks it should be and whenever we followed the proper processes that would allow for the opportunity given to us in law to go forward if we so chose, but we don't need to necessarily choose that either. So I think, I think the deadline should not be either a hindrance or a pressure, yeah.
Thank you so much for that, Vice Chair Phillips. Thank you all. Thanks everyone for your comments. So I'm not going to be taking a vote on this item. I'm just going to ask us to continue to do the good work in the, the spirit in which we've been doing it and to continue that. And following Vice Chair Phillips' comment, we don't let the date pressure us and make us have that as a target of any kind. Let's, let's make a good decision that's good for everyone. Over time, we will make a decision for those who will follow us as well, right? Yeah. So there we go. Let's move on to the next one, and partly because I know I'm going to teach it for o'clock, so. Yeah, let's do that. Do you think that it would be helpful to have that now or just not?
30 seconds and then I.
Just to get it on the record.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
So continuing with this agenda item, but shortening it just because we do have one more agenda item that we, Chair Bowles, you'd like to get our attention on. So indirect costs is a very, it's, it's, it's a lot of learning. It's a lot of understanding how it works. And so staff is working really hard to understand it, to, to give you the information because it's a part of this, but it's, but they are also mutually exclusive ideas. But yeah, a lot of times we get to talking about both of them at the same time. And so a, a more recent question or conversation has been, you know, is the indirect cost in our participation in it a federal or state regulation? Or is it a, is it a complicated to construct and deconstruct? We know it's complicated to construct, that we know. There's no argument on that part of it. And then deconstructing may be just as hard to put it together. It might be just as hard to take it apart. And so I'm trying to share that out as we've listened to different people talk about it. And then just the numbers, because we have been privy to, and we've been doing different pivot tables and whatnot related to it, just understand, it may not all be right. We check for understanding. Sometimes we get an assumption wrong along the way, but it does look like, you know, 214,000 is what's budgeted for school fiscal year. And then there's a breakdown of the different departments, and then the suggested amounts that would go into each of those departments. So mail services has gotten a lot of attention. It wasn't 3,700, it was 3,100. I got it wrong earlier, but, but you can see that we don't do a lot of mail, but that is something that we pay indirect costs for. And there's these different, so all it is for today, I believe, is for your review. The Authorization Committee continues to ask questions, I think good ones. I know that the Deputy Superintendent Jones is asking good questions, but it's trying to grapple with indirect costs and its relationship to the State Charter School Board. No action needed, just continued reporting and continued conversation. Yeah, discussion.
Vice Chair Phillips?
I just wonder if, did I, did I understand from your comment correctly that the authorizing committee is looking at this?
Started.
I'm wondering if that isn't misplaced for their particular province.
I had it wrong. I meant finance.
Oh, that makes much more sense to me. I have no comment.
All right. Okay. Thank you for your report, and we know, and comments, and for everyone who's made comments relative to this issue, and we know we're going to continue talking about it and continue to look at it with others who are not here even, that we need to bring into the conversation. All right. Let's move to our final action item today. And it is Moab Charter School. I want to note that the Chair and Vice Chair, I believe, of Moab Charter School are here, and if they'd like to come and join us at the table as we have, as we may have questions, maybe, maybe not. And we'd at least want to hear what it is that you as a board have chosen to, you know, what your decision has been, what you've had in your discussions.
Briefly, just going through this slide. Thank you so much. And maybe not action item, maybe more update. We'll see, you know, always can go different directions with agenda items. So we did decide as staff, it's underneath our review, and you've heard about our letter of awareness, and we sent out a letter of awareness to Moab, which just identifies the issue, and it talks about our compassion for being busy, like charter schools are really busy. And then there's a call to action to have a conversation. We did have a conversation with board leadership and administration where we discussed some of these issues, some of the issues just for your knowledge, and, and it's just the transfer of operation and control that was being proposed as a concept did not come to fruition. And so we just discussed some of the reasons why, and just a conversation. We talked about enrollment, advertising and marketing, uh, talked about some different strategies, talked about staffing. Uh, we talked about potential closure, because there's, when there are issues. That comes up, whether it's staff, or whether it's a community member or board member, we all just have our antenna up with the possibility. And that's comes through relationship and conversations and letters of awareness, and I've even shared with. You know, that it's potential, it's not saying it's happening or anything like that, there's kind of the swirling conversations about it. And so with that, we talked about students being the priority, and in particular, there are thirty-eight percent of the students at this school are. Uh, students uh with a disability, and so we discussed that as being central to whatever happens. And we also talked about timing of an authorizer, timing of an LEA. Uh, there's a lot of statutory obligations in any type of school, school closure, and so we discussed that. We got into some ideas uh to be supportive authorizer, and it was agreed that there be some mediation, just. It is, these are difficult things to discuss, and so we uh are going to interject and mediate. Uh, just some additional conversations, so they were very receptive to that. And then they're also receptive to vetting other solutions and other potential partners. Uh, maybe just with more time is what was discussed. And then fifty-three G five five oh four, we're exploring and looking at the possibility that if there was a school closure, that. An authorizer still could get a ser- service provider to support students, so. That really concludes, it's just an update, we thought it important enough to update uh our board, it started out as kind of a. Uh, merger, or I would call it like a surrender agenda item. But over the last two weeks, it morphed into just Moab Charter School, which is why we gave the update here, and so. Constructive conversations, so.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that continued work with. About Charter School with any of our schools, our whole intent, once we form this partnership with any school, we are, our goal is to help. Each school to succeed, because you're helping children, families to succeed, and that's our our goal, but we also. Uh, know that that governing board at that school runs that school, and. We want to hear from both of you, and hear what, where you are at this point, what you're thinking. And I'm gonna ask you both just to introduce yourselves, even though we know you, just so online, we can catch, capture that, please, thanks.
Uh, Royce Van Tassel, I'm Board Chair of the Moab Charter School, I'm pleased to be here today.
Good afternoon, it's good to be with you, my name is David Mortensen, I am the Vice Chair of Moab Charter School.
It's probably a little bit uh surprising that uh two people that live on the Wasatch Front are Chair and Vice Chair of the Moab Charter School. Um, I joined the board a couple of years ago, the school has um had some uh challenges. Uh, maintaining uh board stability and having a board that was uh supportive of the administration. Uh, Carrie Anne Smith, who's the Director, um, has really done uh absolute yeoman's work for the better part of a decade. Um, almost single-handedly uh carrying that school, um, and uh I was determined to. Uh, help uh alleviate that burden, it's not fair to ask a director to carry all of that. Frankly, um, I recruited uh Dave, um, who has obviously a lot of. Um, experience uh with schools as well, uh, to join me, um, we have uh. The the big challenge, um, as uh Paul has indicated, which we've seen over the last couple of years, um, is enrollment. Uh, there was a time uh when the school was, um, say it, uh, somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty kids, and I think. In that space, um, Moab Charter School can be uh fiscally sound. But we have uh really since COVID, um, uh relied on uh COVID relief dollars. Uh, to support the operations of the school, and um. That that's never gonna be a healthy place, because those dollars are are one-time. Um, and those dollars are are going away, I think the last uh of those, even with the permissible uses. Uh, disappear at the end of September. Um, and as we are looking at uh budget for the upcoming year, uh, we're in a difficult place. Difficult to see a a place, given the enrollment, where um we can come close to breaking even. Um, and so we've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years, knowing that this was coming, um, exploring, uh, how can we. Uh, alter that enrollment pattern, charter schools across the country have succeeded in uh areas where there was flat. Or even declining enrollment, um, and so we've, we've as a board and with the administration, explored a number of op- uh options. Um, and uh I will express some degree of disappointment that we haven't. I think been able to find something that feels uh like it's uh has the potential of being successful. It's not to say that those don't exist, but but time is is really running out, um, it's difficult to. Uh, say that we want to continue, um. When it's diff- when we can't see uh an endgame, and so as as Paul indicated, um, all options. Um, including surrendering our charter, uh, are on the table, I think, uh, as a board, we all want to see the school uh succeed. Um, and also recognize that, um, some experiments, um. Uh, lasts for a while, and then they may ultimately uh fail, and that's a set of lessons to learn. Um, so, uh, we continue to uh work closely with um with Carrie Anne and with the staff to say what is possible. Um, but we're cognizant of our uh duties in relation to the contract we have with you. Um, and certainly uh through the funds that we administer um to the taxpayers, and we want to be good stewards in both of those cases.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just echo a little bit of what uh Royce has said, uh, you know, we we both uh joined the Moab Charter School Board with. With a strong desire to maintain and strengthen that school, um, it does provide a valuable service, as Paul has mentioned. The service that it provides, you know, thirty-eight percent of its students are uh qualified, you know, as special needs, and and having that school there and giving. That option to uh the families in Moab is, I think, a very valuable service, and. We we are working hard, we have been meeting regularly, uh, trying to come up with ways to increase the enrollment, because frankly. That is the key to success as a charter school, and right now we're just too small, and so uh there's. Options we've discussed, you know, the 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 space there is is not op-optimal either, I don't know if any of you have been down to the. The space recently, but it's not exactly optimal, and we would love to consider options there, but frankly. Uh, a-all of the hurdles can be overcome with just another thirty students. And so that's what we're really working for, that's what we're really trying to do and accomplish, but, um, you know, as. Uh, as we start approaching a new school year, uh, both Royce and I have uh realized that we have to be realistic and and have to have every option on the table. And be considering all of those options as we decide, as, you know, stewards of our agreement with you and of taxpayer funds, how best to go about using those funds. That's, I don't, uh, we're, we're very actively working on this and and don't have a solution for you right now, but hope to have one in the very near future.
All right, so your board hasn't taken a specific action one way or another at this point?
The action that we took in our May meeting, um, uh authorized uh Carrie Anne as the. Uh, school administrator and myself as Board Chair to negotiate and consummate upon a. Uh, a merger or surrender with Canyon Grove, um, over, as as you heard in the conversation uh from Paul. Um, that didn't materialize, and so our uh next board meeting, I think, is uh June nineteenth. Um, uh, we have uh looked at, um, and put out a uh, a, a, a. A draft budget, um, per our requirements, uh, under the uh code for next year. Um, and uh if if we're able to uh make something and we see a light at the end of the tunnel, we'll, we'll. Uh, continue forward with that, that's the the most basic obligation we have, um, any other motions that may be considered will be. Uh, considered uh in in public, um, at that June meeting.
All right, thank you, so, the June meeting then, we'll, we'll be interested to hear what you decide and how, where, what you're recommending. From your pers- perspective, thank you so much, I'm not sure there's an action we can take at this point, we're just, Vice Chair Phillips, go ahead.
I just want you to know that uh you two leaders of this school, that. We appreciate your good work, and it's a, it's a diff- it's such a difficult position to be in, and some of us have been in it, um. I myself joined a board of of a school that was struggling some years ago and ended up helping to close that school. Um, I hope that you're more fortunate, and that something comes along that gives you a second wind. But I I just wanted to stay kind of for the record that we are your partner in this agreement, and we, you know, we stand ready to either. Uh, help you thrive and move forward, or to help you uh in any other actions you may take, um, where we have. Both statutory and ethical obligations to, you know, to to help with a soft landing, so, we appreciate your work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
And we know it's harder for you, because you see faces that we don't see, and so we just are talking about school, and we know you. But we know that you think of individuals that are engaged in the process one way or another, so. We absolutely are here to support, and so look forward to hearing from. Your next board meeting, where you you plan to go, and know that we're open for conversation all along that way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for coming and talking to us to, with us today. Um, I will entertain one last motion, uh, Vice Chair Phillips, if you won't mind.
Chair, I'd like to move, but we adjourn.
So, thank you so much, that will just help us, and members Cisneros and member Spiker, thank you for joining us online. And sticking with us to the meeting, all of them, everyone for their preparation, Director Kramer and uh Stephenson. Thank you so much for all of the work and preparation that goes into today, and we appreciate it, and. We are adjourned until June thirteenth, our next meeting, and we'll see you then, thank you so much.